Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us at the May 6 meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the events around the room and now join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first time on the agenda is a new public hearing for Jeffrey Groves Estates. The applicant is seeking extension to site plan approval. May I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Kaufman is here representing the project tonight. We had discussed some things with Mr. Kaufman in advance that the performance bonds needed to be done for everything. That's not really part of the application tonight. All he's doing is seeking site plan extension. And again, he's indicated that the reason why they have not begun construction is because market conditions were militating against the introduction of new housing at the moment. But I think that that might be changing somewhat, according to Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman. We are, in fact, moving to start the project. We also are, you know, we're going to make a revision to what we call the eastern end, which is now nine single-family lots. We're going to change that into 12 townhouses, similar to what's on the western side. But that's not a part of the application tonight.
Correct.
So, in essence, the approval, I believe, is through June. And so, in order, you know, and apparently, you know, the conditions to start and all that have, I'm trying to comply with them, and, you know, there's bonding, and then I have to go to Dutchess County Waste Water and all of these, you know, things that major efforts. And I don't think I'm going to, or I may not be complete in time. I do not want to get stuck with a, you know, a term in a, you know...
We don't want you to get stuck with that either. I might add that the letter we got from Dutchess County Water and Waste Water Authority's Director, Bridget Barclay, was pretty thorough about needing some new steps as well, so... And just as a reminder to the audience and to the board, this is a kind of bifurcated application, or was. You have half of it that was subdivided for single-family homes, which is not subject to site plan. Once it's subdivided, it lasts into perpetuity. The other half of it was site planned for townhomes. That's the way our code reads. And site plan does expire unless substantial construction is begun within a year and completed within two years. So, would there, is there any member of the public who'd like to speak about this application? Would you like to? Mr. Kaufman, do you mind sharing the mic? Just come on up, sit down, and state your name and address for the record.
My name's John Schubisch. I live at 25 Hollow Ridge Road in Statsburg. My property is right up against the property that you're alluding to. And I'm just concerned that, about when construction's going to begin, and if I'm going to have problems on my side of the property line because of it.
Okay. If I'm not mistaken, you, your property backs up to the back of our property?
It's on the east side, yeah.
On the east side?
Yes.
I thought that was owned by, actually, the seller, the Groves family. I forget who's the owner now.
Wouldn't you be to the northeast of the side?
North, yeah, oh, yeah.
It's the northeast of the side. It's the ten acre parcel.
We are well away from your site. We are...
And Mr. Schubisch, the bulk of the, the 38 townhomes would be furthest away from you. They're, they're all the way on the west side of the site.
Right.
Yeah.
And then the nine single-family homes that were already approved in the subdivision would be the closest to you?
North Cross. The bulk, well, not the bulk. All of the construction is taking place on the North Cross side of the property. And the left, the balance of the property is going to be left fallow and, you know, untouched.
Great.
So, you should have, you won't even know we're there, hopefully.
Yeah. All right. That's, it's going to be what it's going to be.
Yeah. Actually, the way it's laid out now, with nine single families, we're much closer to you. We're moving, we're eliminating them. They went all the way to the edges. We're eliminating that, and we're bringing all the construction and the townhouses up toward North Cross.
Correct. In other words...
You will, we're going to be ways away, way away from you.
In the preliminary design that we've seen, when he gets, when he re-subdivides, and the nine single families are no longer there, and there are 12 townhomes, they'll be drawn away further from your property and made more compact, closer to North Cross and closer to the other spine of the townhomes that are already approved.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Kyle.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Yeah, sure.
Anybody else in the public who'd like to speak about this application? Any comments from the consultants? Any comments from the board?
I just had a question. Have you actually, like, roughed in a driveway and done some partial clearing there?
No. That existed already.
That's what...
There was a, a drive-in that existed for a long time. We haven't done any work up there.
Okay.
I'll tell you what we did. I'm sorry. We, what we did do was, at the request of Pete Sotero, he wanted to confirm the, whether or not there was going to be any issues with the pond and where we had laid out the townhouses.
Right.
And we did, in fact, dig some test pits in the last week or so.
Okay.
And that's all that we did.
Okay.
And in fact, we found that there were just no issues with the water, and so that ought to work out just fine. And, you know, he's preparing a report for Mr. Sotero to review.
Okay. I was wondering, because I've seen some activity there, and I...
That was, it was a test pit regarding the saturation of water in the soils.
Okay.
What happened was, Mr. Berger is, Joe Berger is his engineer, and we had our first meeting to discuss potentially changing the nine single-family homes to 12 townhomes. The initial design they laid out, when we were just further discussing it, it kind of became apparent that you'd be able to market them better with a view of the pond. So, once we started changing the layout of the homes, there was concern, both from TAD and from our engineer, Pete Sotero, that it might compromise the pond itself. So, they were asked to do some test pits for percolation and to see if there was a way that, the pond is originally, is not really natural, from what I understand. It was...
Yeah, but it turns out that it's a non-issue.
Right.
It turns out that it's stable, and the water is not an issue in terms of getting it to basements or anything like that. So, we may, in fact, go with the original layout, but I'm going to leave that to Mr. Berger. He's going to discuss that with Mr. Sotero, and whatever the fine engineering minds that are involved here figure out is going to be what we build.
I was just curious, because I'd seen some activity there.
There's a, there's a condition on the approval that you placed on it that said, "Prior to any land disturbance, the applicant has to put up a letter of credit." And so, anything more than just the test pits will require them to come back into the planning board for approval of a letter of credit.
Well, if my understanding is that there was a bonding amount, and that we were going to post a performance bond in lieu of a letter of credit, but whatever that is, you know, whatever the financial security. And I don't know what the status is of that amount, but I'll leave that for another day. We'll just get what we asked for tonight, and that'll be fine.
We're going to say, we have a recommendation from Mr. Sotero for the first part of the performance bond, but it looks as though, based on the letter from Bridget Barclay of DCWWA, that some of those amounts may need to change too when it comes to the other bonds, from what the original estimates. So, any other comments from the board on tonight's application? They're being then making a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, and who has this resolution?
I have it.
Thank you, Robert.
Keeping up with notes. Okay. Alrighty. We have a resolution to grant a one-year extension of all deadlines pursuant to Section 108-9.6A of the Town Code, Jeffrey Groves Estates, May 6, 2015, Resolution 68-12C. I'm just going to read, I believe, the first and last ones here. Whereas on March 6, 2013, the planning board reapproved North Cross LLC final site plan approval for a townhouse development known as Jeffrey Groves Estates, located on 25.17 acres in the neighborhood district, and represented on the map set entitled Jeffrey Grove Estates, et cetera, et cetera. Whereas, 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 a duly noticed public hearing was held on May 6 during which all those who wished to speak were heard, and now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants a one-year extension pursuant to 108-9.6A of the code of the time in which the applicant must commence construction to, and including June 14 to 2016, and the time in which to complete construction to, and including June 14, 2017. There will be no written or verbal notification from the planning board office to the applicant at such time as the extension expired. Any request for an extension of the deadline set forth herein must be submitted to the planning office at least 30 days in advance of said dates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Ms. Lee, thank you, Mr. Kaufman, for driving up tonight.
With a little bit of luck, I may be in front of you in a month, so, thank you very much.
Do you need a copy of the resolution?
I would love a copy.
Why don't you give mine?
And the next item is a workshop item. It's a new application called Hyde Park Truck and Auto Group. The applicants are seeking approval for a site plan to develop a semi-empty parcel right now, that for anyone watching on television would be just North of Clancy's Cafe. The applicant submitted their first narrative and application a while back. We had a chance to meet offline to perfect it a little more, and decided that it was ready to come to the board tonight for consideration. So, let me first point out that Mr. Groninger, Vice Chair Groninger, to my left, is recused for this application, and will be leaving the dais and the room, because his daughter is a co-owner of the site. And I'm officially appointing Victoria Kane, Tori Kane, our second alternate for the duration of this project. And Ms. Kane, it's really nice to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just as a, kind of an aside, Ms. Kane gave up her night tonight without realizing that she was on duty and drove all the way back from Beacon here when she was planning and having, I'm sure, a lovely dinner.
I should have kept better track of the calendar.
No, I, I hope you weren't going to Amherst Court or something really wonderful down there, so...
Much more casual, so...
There you go. All right. So, Mr. Terms is representing the applicant tonight. Paul Terms is the engineer, and I'm going to turn it over to you to describe what you'd like to do.
Okay. Good evening. Basically, this is a half-acre site on Route 9G on the western side, and it is, at this current time, somewhat used for the last five to 10 years by Mr. Lombardi, when he, before he moved his construction company out to Poughkeepsie. And currently, there's a auto repair garage or paint shop directly adjacent to this parcel. So, this, this parcel is not a pristine lot. It, you know, storage of construction equipment, cars, and this has been going on for quite a while. And now, Mr. Lombardi wants to pursue a new business there, rental cars and truck rentals, and possibly along with used car sales. And in the development of the lot, he wants to put up a small sales office, 18 by 20-foot building. And basically, it's, the parking and the display areas will be in the center of the lot, with the setbacks being landscaped areas up to bumper to property. And he's going to put the concrete sidewalk along Route 9G in the front, hopefully for future connection down that side of 9G. The, we try to maximize, due to this is a small, less than, just under a half-acre, we try to maximize the use of the land for parking cars and display areas to be able to run the business there, and provide the parking required through the zoning codes. So, we, we met all the customer and employee parking requirements, and we're able to squeeze 27 display units that'll be used for both car and truck rental, along with used car sales, and six more spaces in the back for storage of cars, whether it's cleaning rental cars, or, while exchange of titles are occurring with car sales. And this is a previous approved lot on a site plan, so the curb cut off of Route 9G is existing now. The septic system has been installed by Mr. Lombardi, the contractor, for the previous use of this property, which I believe was a mechanic's garage...
Correct.
...on, on the property there. So, so a lot of development has, has taken place there, and we'd like to, Mr. Lombardi would like to try this new business on the lot.
Thank you. In our first meeting that was non-quorum, offline, as I call them, we noted that the code requires that buildings be brought all the way to the front, and everything else parking to the rear. However, in this case, we were discussing allowing, this is up to the rest of the board, but allowing the office, which, if you've seen the picture, it looks pretty attractive, actually, I think at least, to stay where it is. And one of the reasons is because the purpose of this is to actually sell or rent automobiles. You put all the autos behind the building, you'll never see them. And equally importantly, the septic line has, was already run to, that was where the old building, when it was going to be a garage or car repair, was located. It was under the old code. So, the septic is already drawn there and was approved by Department of Health.
Correct.
So, rather than have them make, mess up more of the site, we, Ms. Moss, Ms. Axelson, Ms. Polidoro, and as it turned out, Ms. Kane, who was in the meeting, kind of thought that it was okay in this site, but I'll be waiting to hear from the rest of you. The other issue is, is that there's a maximum impervious coverage of 70%, and the applicants are still a little above that. But this is not a strictly pervious surface. Mr. Sotero was reviewing some information that Mr. Terms submitted. Because it's asphalt filings, meaning it's ground-up asphalt from another site, there is some sort of credit. And Pete, by the way, when I spoke to him today, he's not here tonight, but I think he'll, Ms. Axelson will confirm this, Mr. Sotero told me that he's looking into it, but yes, you are going to get some kind of credit, so that if you're close to it, it's going to appear that you won't have to get right down to the 70%, because there is some way for the water to enter into the subsurface through this, rather than just sheet flowing off to the side. So, that noted. Let me start with our consultants, as I always do. Ms. Axelson, any comments?
Yeah, I, just to confirm what you were talking about, I know that Pete and Paul have been in contact about the pervious, and they're going back and forth, so there is a possibility of a credit. I know Pete and I had a, just a brief discussion about, I'm, first of all, I was pleased to see that you were using recycled asphalt. And we discussed the possibility of wet compacting, which sort of retains, you know, its perviousness versus not sealing it. My understanding is that this will not be sealed, so it won't be like pavement.
Correct. We have no plans to...
Right. And I know there was discussion about possibly redistributing some of the landscaping, I guess, toward the front, or something along those lines.
Yes, I believe we were going to sit down with the chairman and, and go over some landscape distribution improvements to make it more with the board, the look that the town would like to see. And Mr. Lombardi is aware of that, and he's agreeable.
Right. And I, I know Pete and I discussed that you've already sort of moved things in a little bit, so you have a bigger side yard setback on either side. And, because I know some of the initial commentary was about reducing that aisle, and I don't know if there's any possibility of reducing that any further. I, we understand that all of these improvements are going to make the site look a lot better, and it'll be in use, so...
That's a very nice way to phrase it. In essence, just for everybody who doesn't have an idea of this site, to the rear of Clancy's, behind Clancy's, there's a series of businesses, and this site is actually used to access it. So, as, you're correct, and Mr. Lombardi has a construction company, and he was sort of storing his big, heavy equipment on it, so it's fully disturbed already. It's been in use. This actually, this application, in my own opinion, because it's going to have now two 10-yard-wide landscaped, landscaping areas, is actually going to enhance everything. And as I said, the elevation for the building, it is, I think, very attractive. It's going to complement the area of what's already, they're actually kind of improve it in some ways architecturally. So, thank you for those comments, Ms. Axelson. Anything else?
I know that there's going to be some adjustment about the light pole height and making it a cutoff fixture. And then I think, I was just looking at some of my notes, apparently, the EAF still says 25-foot pole height, so maybe we could have that revised. And it also, I think, still refers to a variance that I don't believe is needed.
Right. You listed the ZBA still in the EAF.
In my redo of it, I must...
These are not earth-shattering.
Yeah. The, what, Ms., the lighting, when we measured it, is still six inches too high?
Yeah, we're, we're going to go with, there's a 15-foot pole, same, same manufacturer.
And it has a funny neck that you're, you didn't realize.
Well, it's still...
Has like a, a neck where you can...
We're working with Mr. Veath, because I think he'll provide the electric service here and the electrician work. And he's going to provide us a light, make sure that it's not a adjustable head on it, and also to provide some back screening to the lights, where some of the, the lighting exceeds the, the limits of the property there, so...
Thank you. It's particularly worrisome, because it goes on to the neighbor to the north, which I know at this time is not a really sightly neighbor, but for the future, if it ever improves, you, that's where we're required to have this screening, and we want to make sure the light doesn't shine over onto the neighbor's property. I think you can shield that, and also, by not having a light that can be adjusted so much, it should make that last for the future.
Lighting plans, like, stuff like that?
Yes. I'm going to, I'm going to pretend to be Mr. Sweet and say, "I couldn't hear you because you weren't speaking to the microphone."
I just wanted to confirm that we would get an updated lighting plan that reflected the new light fixtures.
Yes, we will, we're working to get a new lighting plan with, with the shielding. We weren't so concerned in our meeting with Mr. Sotero and the chairman of, some of the light going towards the parking lot heads towards Clancy's, because it's kind of an area used for parking these days, but we definitely want to shield to the property to the north side, and, and we will redo that.
And it doesn't go quite to zero along 9G, but that's not really of concern either, because you have a sidewalk there. You actually want that lit. So, anything else, Ms. Axelson? Thank you very much for your comments. Ms. Polidoro, any comments?
The plans don't have the calculation for the minimum landscaping requirement. There, the code requires 15% of the parking area to be landscaped, and you're showing landscaping, but I don't see the actual calculation.
Can you just take the size of the landscape beds, the front and the two sides, and then divide that out with the total parking, so we can see where you're at?
Yes.
Because what you're looking for is just to make a comparison.
Yeah, I mean, it needs, it just needs to be stated on the plan.
Right.
Otherwise...
There is the, we do meet that 15%, and we exceed it.
I thought you actually would exceed it, actually.
And the only thing that we agreed in our previous meetings was to waive the requirement of the codes of the interior landscaping islands, given the limited size of this lot.
Which is...
Right, the planning board has to agree to that.
Right. But I was going to say, it's, that's something that we often do with sites like this, particularly if they're going over 15%, is to sort of credit it, rather than having the islands all the way in through. And I actually think it's going to be a nice border of green between the residence to the north and this commercial site, so...
I also, I'm sorry to...
Let me go ahead, no, let me go, you get to comment.
I also remember the thought was, because it's a relatively narrow piece of land, and you have parking spaces on both sides, some of which are going to be trucks, you need room to back and maneuver, and if you have islands, it's not going to work.
I was going to say, it's your turn to comment. So, any other comments, Ms. Kane? Oh, you're not done.
I'm still looking for some cleanup on the map. The zones of all the adjacent property owners are wrong, and your maximum coverage, what you've proposed, is incorrect. The maximum coverage here says that you've proposed 64%, but your cover letter says 74%. So, we just need everything to be cleaned up.
Okay. I will, I will get that cleaned up on the next, on the next plan.
Just for me, these are, those are pretty small. You know, we don't have, I'm not even sure what one of the districts was. We don't have those anymore. There's an R4, R2,000 or something, R2,000, yeah, we don't have those anymore.
Yeah, I think that's the only one that remains.
There's another one that I didn't record.
HB, 20,000, and EP, and I didn't know any of those.
Highway Business?
EP Business. East Park Business is...
Oh, that's correct. East Park Business District. So, at any rate, you can just clean those up, but if you're going to submit new plans to the board, don't, don't do big plans on those. Save money. Do the, do the small sizes for us, because it's just changing the language.
Yeah, I wasn't aware that, for all that, we could do that, so, I'll pass those bills on to Mr. Lombardi.
I know.
He'll be glad not to see it.
That's what I'm saying. Let's, we try to, we don't try to waste applicants' money up here. Any other comments, Ms. Kane?
No, I just, I had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Lombardi previously, and it looks like it's going to be a nice improvement to the piece of land.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Dexter?
I agree with my colleague.
I love it when you do that. Mr. Oliver?
I think it'll be a huge improvement to what's currently there, and with the, the new landscaping and the stockade fence, I think, you know, it'll be a nice, nice addition to the town.
Yeah. I think it provides a service to the town that it desperately needs, where everybody goes rent cars and trucks outside of the town.
I'll accept that they can rent them there now.
Are you going to have zip, oh, sorry.
No, I just want to add one more thing. I, I really appreciate very much, as a, as a parent, the fact that Mr. Lombardi is putting the sidewalk in. I recognize, being an early adopter of sidewalks, it feels like the sidewalk to nowhere, but there are a number of restaurant, ice cream shops around that attract a lot of the children from across the street and behind those properties, and it's going to make it a much safer neighborhood, and will help us move forward with adopting sidewalks in other pieces, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think he's on board with that idea. It's, he's trying to have that effect, because I think he's at it, you know, he, he certainly would like to see him along 9G.
He'd like to see sidewalks on the opposite side as well.
Yeah. So would I.
He's, I know. He's an advocate for them too, and thank you for stating that so, so deftly for the record. It's something that, it can never be stated too often, put it that way. So...
One more, one more question regarding signage.
Yes.
I don't think any was proposed with this, so if, if you are going to propose signage as part of site plan approval, the board can do it all at once. If not, you'll have to come back at a later date for approval of the sign.
Yeah, I think when we resubmit the cleaned-up plans, he was still working with the car rental companies to, with his exact signage, but I know he was very close to finalizing that, so I believe we will be doing that. Thank you.
It's just a way, it's, you can do it through site plan, or you can pay an extra $50 and have a sign permit for, and sign separately. I think Victoria's just trying to, again, make, make a little difference in saving money.
Yeah, it's a good idea, definitely.
In addition to my concurring with all my colleagues' comments thus far, I'd like to take a look at the chain-linked fence along the north side, and instead of having the slats in it, maybe just making it a black chain-linked fence, no slats. Reason why I say that is slats, over time, they dry out and...
They deteriorate.
They deteriorate. We're going to work with you on the landscaping to make sure that there's proper screening, so I think the black chain-linked fence will just disappear. I think you'll like the site better.
There, that fence does exist now, without the chain length, so I will bring that up to Mr. Lombardi.
It's proposed to be a chain-linked fence, that's what I was saying.
Oh, it's actually existing right now?
Yes, it exists. He just wants to add the slats, I thought.
Yes. So, you'd rather see a black...
He can spray paint it. It'll disappear that way. Then, the, the only thing I have to add, in addition, like I said, to the previous coverage, that Pete's going to work out with you, with a memo, I believe, what the credit should be, and then the cleanup of the EAF, that in the landscaping, and I'll go through this with you when we meet offline, but to add inkberry, winter berry, and yellow twig dogwood, that will add more inkberry, that will provide all the screening you want, and...
Okay.
We actually chose selection, we chose plantings that are...
Dogwood.
Yellow twi, yellow twig dogwood. That's not a tree, by the way, that's a shrub. These are all plantings that are drought-resistant. They're native.
Okay.[1768.62]
So, you're not, I don't, I don't know, it doesn't look, this site has a lot of watering capability. So once you get a minute, it's going to be easier to have natives that don't have to worry and go, ooh, if it gets too dry like it is right now.
Yeah, I know he will have, as he said, he will have a spigot off his building just if he has to wash his rental cars.
Right.
But I don't see Mr. Lombardi being a, a huge water, so.
Low maintenance.
Water-resistant.
Low maintenance is, low maintenance.
Water-resistant is, is good, so we could talk about that.
So we're prepared, we have a resolution prepared to type the action and refer it tonight. I don't know who has this resolution.
I do.
Thank you, Chris.
Resolution typing action referring the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, Hyde Park Truck and Auto Group, Resolution Number 15-6, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as an unlisted action under SECR. Two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the application. Three, directs its secretary to send notice of its intent to serve as lead agency to all involved interested agencies. And four, directs its secretary to refer the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239M of the general municipal law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Um, how many sets does he need to provide for the?
Seven, um, because I get it.
Right. Seven, you'll need to deliver seven sets of plans to go to D O, Department of Health, DOT, et cetera. Just drop them off to Donna and we will distribute them. And.
Just, just the plan sheets?
Seven.
Yep, seven.
Plan sheets?
Does the EAF come off of the list?
Do I, EAF, this, the application, everything?
Do we have more?
Um, I thought the ZBA came off the list.
We refer.
And we were discussing just a few minutes ago, I thought the statement was that the ZBA did not need to be circulated, that it's no longer necessary.
The, the question is if, if he can't meet the coverage.
Bring this closer.
The coverage.
Pull it to you.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I haven't been here in a long time. If the applicant can't meet the coverage, then he would need a variance. Um, subsequent to that form being filled out, um, Pete met with the applicant and his inclination is that there's going to be a credit issued and that they can get to it without a variance.
That's why we had it filled out.
Um, so, I mean, we can circulate there just in case.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify.
Without maps at this point.
So then it's only six.
So you only need six sets. And I don't think he needs to change the line, the, the other, the surrounding zoning or put the 64% before we send this to county planning, do you, or should we?
I think there's enough to go to county planning.
I do too. And, but I don't want John Lombardi noting immediately that, that it's, there's a discrepancy. Well, he can't kick it back because it's still a complete application, just has some errors to it. Okay. Mr. Lomb, I'm, I'm, the person, Mr. Clark who's reviewing for county planning is retiring this year and he's going through everything, he's going out with the bangs. He kicked an application back for lack of completion based on landscaping last time. So I just want to make sure that everything doesn't, that he gets his 30 days. Uh, and then secondly, we can set up a public hearing as well tonight. Um, would you guys like to start that in two weeks or do you want to start that in a month? So that we give the, the, because our next date would be the 20, 20?
You have to do the SECR circulation anyways.
It's a 30 days and the next meeting we would have in June would be June 6th, I believe?
Third.
June 3rd, uh, which would still not quite give them all their 30 days, but would be closer. So would that be okay to start this in a month instead of two weeks?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. The next motion to set the public hearing for June 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And there be nothing else? We'll wait to hear back from all the plans. You've got, you have your instructions for what to clean up. And whenever you guys want to meet with Tad and me to go through the landscaping, we can.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And by the way, I also want to compliment you for going through the initial, uh, comment memo from Morse Associates and doing such a thorough job.
Okay. No, we appreciate.
And on a personal level, how did you do in your competition?
More success than last year. Survived it without feeling like it was going to die at the end of it.
Mr. Terms didn't, is it Ironman?
Triathlon.
Ironman triathlon. So that's where you swim, bike, and run, I believe. So congratulations. Where's, this was held down south?
Down in Miami, yes.
Down in Miami. Good, good for you.
Yes, nice.
Thanks, and we'll see you in a month.
Thank you. See you soon.
The next, oh, and Ms. Kane, thank you. You may now go have dinner with your family. I apologize. So, and you note that we'll be.
We'll see you next month.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be back in a month.
June 3rd.
June 3rd.
See you then.
Thank you very mu-, and this will be first on the agenda, so it'll be at 7:00. This is first on the agenda, Tori, so it'll be at 7:00.
Okay.
In public hearing. Good night. And next item on the agenda is, uh, is an extension for River Ridge, uh, for the site plan amendment. And I'm happy to report that we've been, if you, there's been some offline emailing. Uh, the original conditions from the last resolution were not met. One of which was is that all trail easements need to be shown on the site plan before I could sign it or Ann or Bob could sign it. Um, and they're in the process of working, it looks like they're very close to working that out now with Winnicky. So, um, and if I read the email correctly, it looks as though there may even be more than one trail now shown. There's going to be one on the ridge as well as one down where it was originally envisioned. So there'll be, this is a nice way, this is an important linkage for the Hyde Park Trail System. Uh, so the amendment, the request was timely, uh, made by Mr. Rothschild, their, uh, their attorney. So, uh, who has this resolution?
I do.
Thank you.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board Resolution granting extension of time to meet the conditions of amended site plan approval for River Ridge formerly known as Maple Ridge. Resolution Number 57-02L, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a 180-day extension of the time to meet the conditions of site plan approval as set forth in Resolution Number 57-02K to and including September 28th, 2015. There will be no written or verbal notification from the planning board office to the applicant at such time as the extension expires. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item is Wajda Site Plan Amendment. And the applicant is seeking to convert a rear space of the buil-, a rear portion of the building to an apartment. Mr. Wajda's here. So I will turn the microphone over to you. You can explain what you want to do.
I feel threatened to be sitting where Mr. Terms was sitting.
You're just what, I, I already stated for the record that you're just turning the rear into an apartment, right?
Yes, nothing else will change. On the exterior, there's no change with anything else. You wouldn't even know there's anything there.
That's what I thought. Um, comments from the consultants, anything?
I think, um, Pete had already emailed about the town proceeding on sidewalk improvements in that area and something about a tree, but, um, I don't know if that's going to happen or not.
Just, uh, in this section, as we all know up here, in this, uh, district, sidewalks are always required. So when people come in for site plan, we typically, even if it's something, well, not this minor, but we always look at, at completing sidewalk connections. However, the Town of Hyde Park received, uh, I believe, an annually $700,000 tap grant um, through the state from the federal government. And it's going to involve completing all the missing sidewalk pieces in this area plus doing some what are called bump outs to add landscaping and trees, uh, some pedestrian lighting, uh, benches, et cetera. Uh, because it's federal and guided through the State Department of Transportation, it's pretty complicated. Yeah, the agreements, so they haven't quite, I believe, signed the final dotted line. They rewarded it. Then the next thing, step will be to do the design work. And then there's a preliminary design by Department of Transportation, uh, actually done by Sandra Jobson, the head of landscaping. Uh, but it's, it's not, it's, uh, kind of more conceptual than specific. So now the next step will be to work with the federal, uh, agencies and the state to come up with a final acceptable design, uh, that'll, you know, be very detailed. And then once that's all agreed upon, then they'll go out to bid. So the process is probably going to take about two years. And even if we wanted to make Mr. Wajda put a sidewalk right now, the truth of it is it would be a waste of money because we're not sure where the final sidewalk's going to go precisely because it's going to have their, sidewalks already exist in the area, but they're not all on the exact same level. So they're going to work all that, uh, all those issues out. Uh, and they also will involve some, uh, new drainage patterns. So, uh, that's, was kind of the preliminary discussion. And, uh, so did you build this building? You've owned this since it was approved?
Eighty-seven, yes.
Okay.
So it's.
In the original application that was submitted, we got, uh, Mr. Sweet wants to try to narrow down this. This was all we got, which is fine for us because it's, you're basically just adding a window, I believe.
The window there.
It is?
Yeah.
So is there any exterior change?
None at all.
Oh, good.
Unless we got to go to the planning or to the, the West Meyer. For his approval on whatever it's going to take to meet the requirement.
I don't think.
Building requirements.
Yeah.
My understanding from the zoning administrator that you may need to add an, an additional window because of, there was a question about whether an additional window would need to be added to make it a dwelling unit.
Oh.
Under the building code.
The building code usually requires an egress, I mean, not, it's, it now requires an egress window.
Yep.
When I redid my house, for example, I had to have one that I can jump out of on the second floor.
Yep.
Ironically, if I jumped out of it, I would.
Dead anyway.
I would be dead because it's right above where my rock ledge is, but I had to have one.
But you can get out anyway.
Well, I, it's, right next to me is a door that has a staircase leading down from the second floor. It'd be easier to reach that than plunge to my death and hit the, my, my head on the rock, but, uh, or break my leg, take your pick. Yes. And it's a big one. So you may have to have that one. I don't think it's quite as big if you're on, this is on the ground floor. So I think you should be safe that you have to have the ginormous one I had to put in. But yeah, it's bigger than all the rest of my windows on my house. I remember that now. Because it was an expansion of that bedroom. So, uh, you'll see on that one. But it, even then, it's not visible from this area. All we're doing is we're making, going from commercial to mixed use. So, uh, any other comments, Ms. Polidoro? Any comments?
Nope.
Mr. Groninger?
Mike, I have to ask you one question and I'm going to be very naive on this one. Many years ago, when we looked at a building to put a business in, they said if we had a, um, a resident living there, okay, it had to have a, some kind of a rated firewall.
Yes.
And does this facility have that?
Not yet.
Okay, so that will have to be a part of it.
Yeah, that's, I went to the building department and this, Don said, go up the zoning first, see what you got to do there.
Okay. So yeah. Just warning you that that's ahead of you. It is not an exterior item, does not involve the planning board per se.
Right. So yeah, no, it has to be engineered.
See, we're those kind of people up here. We try to think in advance to help people along. That's not a joke. We've all been up here.
Yes.
Eleven years, 10 years, 10 years, now three, four.
Four.
We try to give away the advantage of our, of our learning the ropes. So, any other comments?
That's it.
Ms. Dexter?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
No comment.
Yeah, it's, this is minor. We are required by law to refer this to the, uh, county planning department. So what we did was, I don't, because I don't want this kicked back.
Right.
From Mr. Clark, um, we have a, a digital version of the 1987, I believe, approved site plan. So we're going to send that along with this.
It's our change.
With, right, because there's really no change with it otherwise. So. Um, by the way, the Harvest Moon Gifts owner.
Yes.
She was very nice when she came through. She's, I, um, she seems to be, she's thriving there, I guess.
It's amazing, yes.
It's a tough time for retails. That's what I was going to say. I'm glad to say she's survived.
It's beautiful in there too.
Yeah, no, no, I've been in, I've been in. I bought some stuff before.
It's a nice place. She's wonderful.
Yeah, it's just, I'm delighted because like I said, brick and mortar retail right now is tough and it's.
But hers is a unique.
It is, it is, it is, it is. So I'm glad to see that she's been doing well. So who has this, uh, resolution?
I have this one. Resolution typing action and referring the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, Wajda Dwelling Unit, May 6th, 2015, Resolution 15-16. Whereas, 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 whereas. Whereas, oh, wait a minute, I'm going to read this one. Whereas in pursuant to Section 239M of the general municipal law, projects located within 500 feet of a state highway must be referred to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for a report and recommendation therein. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby classifies the project as an unlisted action under SECR for which an uncoordinated review will be conducted. Number two, waives the requirement for an amended site plan pursuant to 108-9.4C, Sub 1, as a proposed use will not result in, I'm sorry, will, whoops.
It should say will result. There was a.
It should, the not has to come out of here. Okay. I apologize. I should have pre-read that one. Okay. Will result in only minor exterior alterations such as the addition of a window at the rear of the structure. And directs its secretary to refer the application to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to 239M of the general municipal law. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Um, Ms. Knapp, can you request expedited review of that from Mr. Clark? And do we have a copy to, we do great. Um, then if you could ask him to get it in before the 20th by chance, then let's go ahead and set the public hearing for May 20th? Make a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? On favor? Aye.
Aye. And that was May 20th.
Yes, aye.
Okay, so, um, we'll set a public hearing for two weeks. Uh, I doubt that anyway we will speak, but it's a requirement of the law. We make sure everything's done to code. And if we have a, if we've received, by law, the county has nine, 30 days in which to comply or to respond. If we get their response back, we'll close the public hearing and take action to consider approval. If not, then we'll have to extend the public hearing out two more weeks, waiting back from, it's just pretty much housekeeping.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming in. Have a nice night. The next item on the agenda is Buell. The applicants are seeking a site plan waiver for an above-ground pool. They are in the statewide area of scenic significance. But the zoning administrator has recommended a site plan waiver. They're also, by the way, in the historic overlay district, but this is in the rear where it won't be observed by the public. Who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Site plan waiver pursuant to Town Code Section 108-9.4C2, Resolution Number 15-17. Whereas an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town and Hyde Park Planning Board by Nathan and Erica Buell on April 24th, 2015 for a property located at 19 Albertson Street in the Town of Hyde Park. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Buell regarding the specific request as received, April 24th, 2015, and in the building permit application filed for this project.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Frank. Uh, we actually did a site plan waiver once already for this project. As I noted before, uh, the site is about four houses down from mine. It's directly on the river. Uh, for locals, it was, uh, purchased from Gene Drewan, who had Gene's Tree Service for a lo-, or Gene's Tree Experts for a long time. This is for a, um, the addition of a screened-in porch. The last was for change to the windows in the rear.
Right.
And they received a variance from the ZBA on this project because they needed a side yard setback, a slight side yard setback variance. So who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Site Plan Waiver for Frank, Robert Frank, May 6th, 2015, Resolution Number 15-7. Whereas an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Robert Frank on March 10th, 2015 for property located at 58 River Road in the Town of Hyde Park. And whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Frank regarding the specific request as submitted to the planning board and with the ZBA application filed for this project. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. I will make the, a motion, this is Resolution Dash 15, this is Resolution 15-B, uh, to release escrow for the following projects, Anderson AT&amp;T Facility, Hyde Park Condominium, The Landing at Hyde Park, and Malt Slot Line. Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Just a note, uh, The Landing at Hyde Park, if, uh, only, I believe Chris wasn't here at the time, but this was the project, uh.
Going back.
That would be, uh, down by the riverfront park and the train station to do some condominiums uh, on the other side of.
In the river.
Basically in the river where Riparian, the application, the application was formally withdrawn. Um, and with the others, they've all been completed. And the last item on the agenda is to approve the, the, excuse me, the April 15th, 2015 minutes. Have we had a chance to read them?
I have.
Thank you. And a note that all four of us were here so we can all vote. Make a, ma-, wow. Make a motion to adopt them.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, consultants, and thank you, media committee. And thank you, Councilman Ray, for being here tonight as our official liaison.
Our official audience.
Yes. Our official audience.
And he didn't leave early.
Thanks, guys. That was fast and efficient.